We just hit the gavel.
Got it.
Yeah, extra hard.
So I ended up watching this.
Sorry. I'm still gonna get going.
Hello, everybody.
Evening, everybody. A lot of call this meeting to order for the February 20th Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Uh, hope everybody's doing alright tonight. Go through the list here. Um, everybody got a chance to review the agenda we set out? You have motion to adopt the agenda unless anybody has any changes? Motion to adopt. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, any special presentations tonight?
Yes.
Uh, open it for public comment. If anybody has public comment.
Everybody looking at me? I got nothing to say.
I will close public comment. Uh, we will look at the consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review that as well. Anybody have any corrections needed on your five minutes or so? Can I get a motion?
Much to per.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. No old business, no new business, all staff updates today.
Family meeting, I'm gonna close the door. I don't mind about that, but nobody can get back there. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. And, uh, I think I need another tier. For all of it. Alright, now. It just buzzed on when I got in.
Right, Charlie.
Okay, so you've gotten through the first four, so we're doing well. Um, We'll talk a little bit tonight about the U D O, um, and the amendment process. Um, for those of you who were here when this was adopted, August of twenty one, um, you may be thinking to yourself, Why are we looking to amend the ordinance? Well, what's it gonna talk about? So, uh, August nine of twenty one, the ordinance was adopted. Um, new U D O was intended to achieve the following objectives: Enhance the user experience, which basically is making more user-friendly. Um, ensure consistency with state statutes, such as one sixty D, which if you read your, is it your blue book or your, what's the color of your book? That you got, anyway. So, one sixty D is the operative regulations for land use. Um, number three, to rework the zoning district. So we actually went from fifteen down to twelve. So we reduced it. Um, changed some of the names. Uh, you know, generally, I tried to bring those into compliance with, um, the land use plan. Updated and improved development standards. This is probably, I would say, the biggest change of the ordinance other than it being now online and available electronically. Um, so, you know, th- there were, um, a fair number of improvements. And I think, you know, if you look in the, um, ordinance, uh, you can, th- these will jump out at you, but, you know, for example, the, um, addition of building design standards. We- we didn't have that before. Um, so now there's a requirement, for example, any building non-residential over four thousand square feet, there has to be a second story. It can be a false second story, but we've got to have that volume, alright, to, uh, um, for that, um, for that, um, for that development. Um, the tree save. Now, I know some of you will say that we need to do more, and yes, we do need to do more. However, um, there were changes related to the, um, identification of heritage trees and preservation. Um, and, uh, that was, um, a, uh, a good thing, uh, and we're looking to, uh, to build on that. Um, sustainability requirements. Again, that was another, um, change, which, um, is, uh, I think gonna be, uh, enhanced in, um, in our update. Um, and there were some, some others, um, you know, more, um, of, of, of minor nature, but, uh, you know, pretty much every part of the ordinance was touched in one way or another. Uh, some less, uh, some more. Um, some were really just brought over into the new ordinance. So, for example, parking, uh, signage, uh, pretty much, you know, there wasn't a whole lot to, uh, change. So, all that said, um, we've used it now for two-plus years. And all of us that have worked with it have seen issues with it. And, you know, Shelley's been here since June. She's seen issues with it. I've been here about eighteen months. I started a little, uh, list of cha- of changes, uh, that need to be made. And so, you know, that's powerful, of course. Anytime you adopt new regulations, new legislation, uh, there's always gonna be tweaks that you have to make because once you start driving that car, you realize, okay, maybe I need to get it tuned up, or maybe I need to, um, you know, change some things to, to make it run better. So, we, um, believe that it is a good thing, number one, to update the U D O on a regular basis. Uh, particularly, um, in a community like Harrisburg that's growing very quickly, um, where you are needing to apply that ordinance regularly and in some cases, um, where, where there's a significant potential for impact. I'll give you an example. I'm forty-nine. Um, so you can see the, um, the effect of some of the ordinance, um, both from the, uh, materials individual down to the knee-walls. That was a little one, right? So we, we get that little, uh, touch that, you know, makes a big difference after a while. Um, and so, you know, the accumulation, though, of all those changes over time is what changes a community. And if you would like to see a prime example in the Charlotte metro area, go to Huntersville. Huntersville adopted a form-based code, one hundred percent design-based, one hundred percent. Um, about nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, when the population of the town was about ten thousand people. So, uh, Huntersville's pushing sixty-five, seventy thousand people now. So they've had a lot of development that has occurred under that new ordinance. And when you drive through Huntersville, you will see a difference. You will recognize, oh, this doesn't look like every other community because of the regulations and those were applied on a consistent basis. And so, it is really important that, um, not only that we, we update, um, the ordinance, but make sure that it is, um, responsive to, uh, what we want, um, the community to look like and where we want to go with that. And I think that, you know, really, uh, post-two thousand eighteen, when this was adopted, the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan, um, I think that we sort of crossed a line, uh, and, you know, the, the consensus is that, um, uh, we're growing. We want the growth to be quality. Um, there's some growing pains, but I think we're generally on the same, uh, page. So, let's talk a little bit about, um, the ordinance and what, um, we can, we can do. So, since the adoption, there's actually been several amendments, and for those that have been on the, the board for a few years, you know that we've done some of those. Some have been substantive changes, like the, uh, change for the vape shop or the food truck, uh, or for, you know, signage, whatever it might be. And some are structural changes, um, where we've made some, some tweaks. For example, uh, we adopted the, uh, regulations for planning and zoning board. We had to make changes internal to the, uh, ordinance. Uh, interestingly, when we got into the food truck ordinance and we started peeling back that onion, uh, we realized that there were other layers affected. And so, we kind of launched off into the containers. Um, but they were all kind of grouped together under temporary use or, uh, accessory use. And so, you know, again, there's some of that, that as you use the ordinance, you find out, uh, what, what needs to be worked, um, or what needs to be improved and, and what's working just fine. Um, so, really going back almost to the beginning, and I think Kevin, Kevin's been here probably the longest, and Bill probably knows this as well. Um, almost from the day of adoption, uh, there was a desire, particularly related to the sustainability section of the U D O, um, to enhance. Uh, there was this, uh, I think, a, a feeling that not enough was done, um, and it, it was truncated, uh, somewhat. And so, you know, that is something that, uh, has been, um, I think, on the, uh, uh, you know, on, on, on the radar for three years now. Um, there's also other things that have come up from the council. And, um, you know, everything from what number do we use for T I A? We're using a hundred peak hour trips and a thousand average family total. We wanna change that. Uh, we use a different number for commercial. Do we wanna change that? Um, do we wanna look at setbacks? Do we wanna look at, uh, buffers? Do we want to? You know, there's a lot of things that we can, we can look at. So, you know, again, from our standpoint, um, in, in, we, we know areas that, that need help, um, that really need to be, uh, changed and amended. But when you're looking at doing, um, a comprehensive assessment, uh, you really need some outside help. Um, you know, we just don't have the manpower to handle that. Um, we have our hands full with current planning, uh, so the U D O is really a separate, uh, you know, project all, uh, by itself. So, the, uh, the plan is that we would, um, secure, uh, the services of a planning consultant that would, uh, work with us in looking at the ordinance holistically, looking at it comprehensively, um, and seeing where, uh, it works, maybe where it doesn't work, uh, you know, how we could enhance it. Uh, but it will be a joint process. Uh, we're not gonna say, uh, we'd like you to look at this ordinance and tell us what you think, uh, and, and bring it back to us in six months. Um, I think probably what we're gonna do from the, the beginning, um, is have an outline ourselves. Uh, you know, these are some areas that we think need to be addressed, uh, and, and there's obvious, there's gonna be others that I think that we can solve. So, we've already begun that process, um, and that process will continue over, uh, time.
I have a second delay.
Can we add? Any ideas? Can we give you any ideas?
You may need to click the PowerPoint again.
Did it advance? Did you try?
Have to go back there.
Yeah, I can, I can click it from here.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's, let's begin with kind of framing the issue, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about each of these. But number one still is to improve the user experience. Um, Shelley and I have been doing this a long time, and so we can open up pretty any, any ordinance and figure it out, you know, in a reasonable amount of time. But most people who open the ordinance, um, have not been doing this a long time. Um, and we want this to be intuitive. Uh, we want it to be as easy as taking out your remote and saying, "On," and ESPN. Um, that's where we wanna go with this. And I will tell you that having looked at it, and, and, you know, Shelley, I'm sure, uh, can weigh in on this as well. Um, although the functionality is good in terms of links, it's wonderfully, you go, the structure is a little bit, um, non-user-friendly, let me put it that way. So, we're gonna work on that. We want to try to locate things together that should be together. Uh, we wanna make quick links. So, if someone, for example, um, is looking to develop and then wanna pull up our, um, parking requirement, so they'll be able to pull those up very quickly, find out very quickly what our standards are, uh, what the, uh, landscaping standards are, what the lighting standards are, everything, all in one place, and be able to, to run with it. Um, and we hear this all the time from, uh, consultants and, and civil engineers. Uh, and again, everybody, um, you know, learn, there, every community has a different ordinance, right? So it's not like the same one for everybody. Uh, but, you know, we will get questions from people and and frankly, some of the questions, I'm thinking, wow, uh, this really highlights that this is not as straightforward as it needs to be. I mean, it could be simpler, it could be easier. Um, so that's, that's one thing, is im- improve the user experience, whether it is for the professional or for a citizen, someone just looking to, uh, you know, figure out what they can do with their property. Uh, number two is really big, internal consistency and accuracy. So, um, what this means is if we say one thing in this part of the ordinance, we don't contradict it in another part of the ordinance. And you would say to me exactly, is that in our ordinance right now? Yes. Um, you may not know it, but we know where the issues are. Um, accuracy. Um, the, uh, th- the U D O right now has links which reference the old U D O. Uh, we have links which don't work. Um, last year, we did get some of those repaired, uh, but not all of them. And so, that's not something that we want, uh, in, in our ordinance. We want all the links to work. We want the, uh, links to go to the definition for the new U D O, not the old one. I'm giving you a real example. Uh, so we need to, we need to fix that. Um, compliance with state statutes. I will give you an example, um, of one, and frankly, unfortunately, um, we haven't tested it, uh, but if we did try to push it, we would not be, uh, w- w- we would not be able to defend it, uh, certainly if somebody sued us over it. Um, and that is a requirement for a percentage or a dedication of, uh, funds for public art, uh, for non-residential development, in conjunction with non-residential development. I think it's like seventy-five cents per, I forget what the metric is, how many square feet. Um, so, we have that requirement in our ordinance. We haven't pushed it, we haven't applied it. But in North Carolina, we are what's known as a Dillon's Rule state. Dillon's Rule, Home Rule, those are like two big categories. Home Rule means that state legislature says, "Community X, here's all your authority, you run with it," and they run with it. And you'll see this in a lot of older communities, Midwest, Out West, uh, where they have a little bit more leeway. Dillon's Rule, everything is really the, um, at the pleasure of the state legislature. So, we have certain things, and, and again, we have the one sixty, uh, you know, legislation, and that guides us and that tells us what we can do and can't do, everything from sending out public notices uh, to, uh, the, uh, the, the, the level to which we can regulate. Uh, or, um, um, try to get improvements from developers. And so in North Carolina, um, the legislature has very narrowly defined what we can do. And so, North Carolina communities stay pretty close to the line. And if you veer outside the line, then some attorney will get you. And the best example I can give you is in Davidson, uh, a few years ago. Um, Bill, I don't know if you're familiar with this, but Davidson, um, had a, um, requirement that for every lot, there was a certain amount, uh, that they were going to receive voluntarily from the, uh, developer. I think a little bit funny, um, for recreation. And so, it may have been five hundred, I don't know what it was. They collected quite a pot of money. Uh, it's close to a million dollars. So, a developer came into town and the development was a little bit larger than some of the other developments, and they did the math, uh, two hundred times five hundred added up to a big number. And so, they sued the town. Um, and some of the other developers said, "Hey, we'll go in on it with you, 'cause we also got some of this, uh, and had some money." Um, and so Davidson had to give back almost a million dollars. And the reason was, in North Carolina, you don't, uh, we don't have impact fee authority. And so people ask, "Why don't we collect money for, um, roads? Why don't we collect money for schools? Why don't we collect money for recreation, et cetera, et cetera?" Um, because we don't have that authority. As a matter of fact, um, over the last, you know, ten, fifteen years, the legislature has actually pulled back some of the things that it gave communities because of things getting outside the lines a little bit too far. Um, and so, you know, that's something that we really need to be very careful about because we don't uh, want to overspend our legal budget, uh, which happened this year. No fault of our company. Um, so, we've gotta be compliant with the state statutes. And, um, the school of government was nice enough to, uh, actually, it's here, uh, to give you a nice little checklist uh, to go through, uh, to go through your ordinance. And that's something that, um, I think was done, but, uh, there's still some areas where, uh, I think we need to tighten things up. Um, last one, improving land development quality through standards and improvement efficient development plan review process. This is where the road meets the road. Because, you know, any developer will tell you that what they want is two things. They want clarity and they want consistency. They wanna know, "This is the standard, and this is, we're gonna apply it. We're not gonna apply it this way to one developer, this way to another." So we're gonna try to keep this as, as consistent as possible. And, you know, from our standpoint, uh, we want that also. And here's why. The more consistent, uh, the clearer the process, the easier it is for us. We don't have to be, uh, changing up because there's, the ordinance is not clear and we have to interpret what it is. Um, and so, it benefits us, benefits the developer. And again, over time, what it gives us is a product, and by product, I mean development, that is quality and it's consistent. It's the same thing every time. Not getting, uh, all kinds of different development all over. And so, things like tree protection, preservation, site design, signage, parking, uh, all of those need some help, uh, and they could come up a bit higher. Um, and fortunately, most of the development, uh, I mean, virtually all of it, is done through conditional zone. We have very little bi-right development, meaning someone could come in and pull a builder permit because the use is allowed, they're in the right zone. All they have to do is come to us, uh, submit plans, it's reviewed, it's all in, uh, staff level, and they can go on their other way and build what they wanna build. Uh, that's rare. It really is. Most of the time, it's conditional zoning, and you will see those when they, they come through. So, you know, these are the kind of things that we, um, we wanna make sure. I, I mentioned a couple others. Just jump ahead. Okay, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm sorry. Have to go back right there. Alright, please go back four slides before we, somebody, um, I hit the wrong one.
Right.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, it's this one. Oh, so, just kind of drill down a little bit. Um, so these are the kind of things that we're facing, and I can give you examples. Errors, as I said, links to old definitions from the old U D O. That's unacceptable. Um, inconsistent with state statute. I told you about the, uh, one with, uh, respect to the arts. Uh, but there are a few others that I think are probably not as clear, uh, maybe not, uh, on its face in conflict, but not as clear. We wanna make it transparently. Lack of detail. Um, you know, we talked about this with signage. Our signage uh, regulations are really very, very, um, uh, how should I say it? Shallow. They don't really respond to, and, and they're not really very, um, flexible. Um, and so a lot of times, we're having to figure things out. And so, we want an ordinance, especially when it comes to signs, that really gives us a very clear, uh, your guidance a little bit. So that's a lack of detail. How about too much detail? You can get that too. Someone opens your ordinance and, you know, um, they can't figure it out. It's probably too much detail. Uh, and I'm talking about civil engineers and developers who do this all over the place. New content. Everybody likes new stuff, right? Um, we're looking at new content. As a matter of fact, I got some new content in my hand. Look at this, the sustainability. Just got this the other day. Um, so, you know, this is the kind of thing where we want to add to the ordinance. Um, generally speaking, and, you know, Shelley's been through a number of these also, on an ordinance and rewrite. Um, you know, the process is very simple. It's very lengthy, it's very detailed, but the process is pretty simple. Uh, you've got the existing ordinance, and you have what you, eventually what you wanna get. And so, the question is, first of all, is there something in here that we can bring over into this? Well, if it's working, it's good, then by all means. Um, is there something that we need to, uh, do away with? Yeah, so don't bring it over. Um, is there something that we need to bring over but change? That's another category. Um, and then, the new content is probably the biggest one, uh, that we're gonna be, uh, faced with. So, in the ordinance right now, um, again, thi- this is my assessment. We've talked about it a little bit, Shelley and I. I think that the ingredients are there, uh, for everything that we need. Uh, we need to change some of the measurements and some of the, um, types of ingredients, okay? We have everything we need. We have use, we have tent, we have parking, we have stuff, but we really need to bring things, um, into a little bit higher, uh, level. Um, and then also, a big part of the ordinance, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, is making sure everything works together. It's gotta be consistent, it's gotta be seamless. You should not have to, um, you know, jump from one to another, to another, to another. There ought to be some co-location, I mentioned a little bit earlier, uh, for the standards, so that you can do, uh, what it is you want to do. Interestingly, um, and I've been around long enough, I'll speak for myself. But, um, twenty, thirty years ago, uh, before unified development ordinances were all the rage, you had subdivision regulations separate. You had site plan review regulations separate, and you had a zoning ordinance was separate. So you had to have three books open while you were figuring it all out. So we brought it together, which is great, um, but I think we can do a little bit better job of integrating. Because, yes, we do have, uh, for rezoning, uh, as an example, residential, which is most of what we're reviewing now. Um, obviously, we, we have the zoning code, uh, but there's also subdivision regulations which impact the layout of the site. Um, and, um, i- in, in site plan, uh, issues which impact the site. So, there has to be, um, you know, a really, um, integrated effort. And so, tha- that's kind of, um, what we're, I think I may have one more. Okay. So, where are we gonna go from, from here? Um, we're gonna put a, we'll put, put together a scope of services agreement, which essentially will provide guidance on what we're looking for from a consultant. Um, and we will, uh, put that out. And essentially we're going to have someone, uh, we talked about this just today in our budget meeting, as a matter of fact, um, basically on retainer. Uh, so that this is an annual exercise or maybe every other year exercise. Because what you don't want to do is get your ordinance, uh, so out of step with reality that it ends up being really unworkable. Um, and a lot of communities, you know, won't update their ordinance for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And what they do is they just amend it, they amend it, they amend it, they amend it. And then you have this ordinance which you have all these amendments and then the amendments aren't syncing up with the other amendments and it, it becomes a mess. So we're gonna, we're gonna make it clear what, what is we want. Um, we're going to solicit for, uh, assistance, we'll interview the consultants, we'll select the hurdles. Um, and that timetable will probably be marched through then. Um, so let me just say this, and I've used this analogy before, I think it's a good analogy. Um, so I use it again. Updating a U D O. And again, this is not a ground level redo, which the one in twenty twenty one was. Uh, we have to continue to drive the car while we make some reviews. All right? So that's really important. Uh, we can't stop and say, okay, no development, we got to fix the ordinance. That's, that's not, um, an option. So we're going to have to see, you know, what's priority, uh, what things we can take care of, uh, maybe pretty easily, uh, what things maybe require a little bit more effort, a little bit more lead time that we have to, uh, work on. And so, um, the process is going to be, um, you know, an ongoing one. This is not going to be a one-shot deal. And just as with all the other amendments that, that you all have seen, uh, you'll see all these amendments. Um, and we will have, uh, presentations, we'll have, uh, you know, you looking at things and, and reading it, uh, and saying, yeah, does this work? Does this make sense? Um, and you can start your own list of problems. You can always build a better mousetrap, right? You can always improve. And, um, you know, we want a very high quality, uh, level of standards. Um, and we also want those standards to be easy to understand and easy to, uh, apply. Uh, again benefiting not only developer, but us. So we don't have to be scratching our head and saying, well, the sign regulations are not really clear on this. And oh, let's make an administrative interpretation and, oh, you know, we just got sued, uh, on this. And now we have to spend money on our turn. I'm painting a worst case scenario, but, uh, if you, you can get into that. And so you want to stick us closely regularly, especially in North Carolina. You do not want to be a pioneer when it comes to seeing how far you can push it, uh, out one way or the other. Uh, so that's kind of the, the overview. We'll talk more about it, uh, but that's a pretty, I think, good initial overview. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer, uh, if they're really hard to answer.
You anticipate workshops with this board along the process?
And, and I, and I think, no, I'm glad you asked that because I think initially, um, what we're going to do is probably an umbrella presentation. All right, we're going to say, here is the ordinance. This is what it looks like. Here's the structure. Here are some areas that we think need improvement. Here are some sections, we think this section is really good. This section needs some work. We need to integrate this better with this. There are some things that we need to remove, there's some things we need to add. So we're going to kind of give you the, the big picture. We'll architect it, if you will, um, and then we can have, you know, we'll drill down for discussion, uh, depending on, uh, what topic it is.
Were able to give suggestions to changes?
Absolutely, yeah. So you can start your own little list.
All right, you can.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one list, this is about four pages long. Um, everything from typos, uh, to, um, this is not right, this doesn't work. Uh, so it really can be, uh, anything. Uh, and, and again, some of it is, uh, more mundane. Uh, other like, uh, requiring that someone, uh, pay for public art when we don't have legislation that allows us to collect for public art, uh, that has to come out very quickly. And so we will, we will, we will remove that one, uh, probably early on, that'd be a fairly easy fix. But I think, you know, we'll package enough together so we're not just doing one at a time. Um, but suffice it to say that, uh, we will not be asking anybody for public art money, uh, until we can address them.
Do you think there may be a couple waves of rebels at that point then? Some stuff that means you can even rectify ASAP, some stuff that gets phased in and then ultimate adoption of U D O.
Yeah, I, I think it, you know, sort of like short, medium, long range, some stuff we need to get on. Uh, and a lot of the stuff that we want to get on immediately is frankly, stuff that we deal with all the time. Um, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that the development is reaching a high level. Uh, but some of our regulations are just not really committed. So I think we're, we're going to have some priorities, uh, that, you know, we're going to work with our consultant and say, hey, let's get on this one because this will make a big difference. This will help us, um, you know, to, to process, uh, more effectively, more efficiently.
A venting session, but one of my biggest disappointments is seeing what happened at Caldwell and Robinson Church Road where they just cleared out the entire forest to do a development. So that's part sustainability, it's part changing the mentality on how developers build, which they'll say isn't possible. Sometimes you gotta push them a little bit to prevent that.
In Davidson, Davidson you can't clear cut, in Huntersville you can't clear cut, in Cornish you can't clear cut.
I don't know.
It has to be surgical, right? So tha- and at the end of the day, there's a certain percentage, you know, that know, certain percentage are free cover. Uh, and this kind of goes along with, we're working towards a tree city designation. Um, and if you were allowing clear cutting, it's probably not a good thing to do.
Or let those reviewers come around anytime soon because that's pretty fresh over there.
Right, right, so, yeah, I mean, it, it is, um, it's a, uh, it's a process, but, um, you know, the sleepy days of Harrisburg are over. Um, and, uh, we are on, um, the, the high-speed, uh, march. And so we have got to have regulations that are tight, uh, that are clear and that we can apply and get the kind of development we want to see. So yes, please, uh, get your, uh, list together and, uh, we will let, uh, hold those in. Because there might be some of the same stuff that we're looking at. So I'm going to allow Shelley to come up. Shelley, if you have anything you want to add to it, then feel free.
I'm agreed with this topic.
Do you have any other questions? You have processes.
Yeah, you know, all the fun stuff. So we typically try to do just a quick development update, some projects that are going through. Uh, so I just have a couple on here. Uh, this one I've shown you before, but we just recently had a community meeting. So I just wanted to share that information with you. So we have a conditional zoning going through, um, on this site located off Hickory Ridge Road. It's a conditional zoning annexation. It's going from the county zoning classification to residential low. Uh, conditional zoning district in Harrisburg. That means that the minimum lot size has to be a half acre.
Like per house or per total, you know, developer math or really half lots? No, it's bigger lots.
Uh, half acre lots is half acre lots. So there's a minimum lot size. When people talk about developer math, it is the density. So the density on this side, this is in the future land use area of very low density. So it's supposed to be under one dwelling unit to the acre. It is, it's point nine something, although the lots are, will be half, a half an acre. But you have to realize when it comes to that, people talk about developer math. It's also town math. And I say that because we are requiring the open space, public open space, saving of trees, or, uh, certain sized roads and improvements and landscape media. And so all of that is coming out of the top. And the more we ask for, the more that you, you, you look at the lots getting smaller, you know, so.
Developers developer math.
Yes. So anyway, uh, so minimum lot size in this development is half an acre. It is a one hundred and twenty-five feet wide lot, so that's pretty wide in today's standards. Uh, twenty percent common open space. Here's a layout. This one's a little unusual because it's future planned road.
Here's my sound.
Oh, it's my watch, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a feature planned road that will connect across the town. So we asked the developer, uh, to have alternative access to these lots. We didn't want a lot of driveways on this particular road section. So they are leaving that requirement through proposed alleys. Uh, so all of these lots, although at least twenty-five thousand square feet size, will be rear loaded, uh, which actually makes it very nice street drainage, uh, when you're driving down the road. Uh, we've already talked to them about, uh, extra parking. Uh, they'll have side load, two garage garages, access from the back.
Where, so where do you want this road to connect to?
The, the road is going to actually connect, uh, I think it starts over on through Isley Meadows. I think it's doing the first section, is it Robinson Church?
Yeah, roads and church and.
Yes. So it's, it's a future connector road to provide an alternative collector through the town. I'll send you the actual alignment. I'm sorry, I don't have all that information this evening. Um, so it will be updated to have a landscape median down the middle of the road, certain width, very, very limited parking, if any, um, on that road. I think there's a little area called out for the mailbox kiosk, uh, for the neighborhood.
So landscape down the middle of the road?
Yes, yeah, so it's, it's mentioned being a collector, a nice sort of mini boulevard.
Are there sidewalks?
There'll be sidewalks on both sides, yes. So, um.
How many lots was that?
So I'm showing this slide just to show you its proximity to Hickory Ridge Elementary School. Frame war one is the upper portion that's already under development. This will connect to that. Uh, we did have the community meeting on the fifteenth. We did have one member of the public attend and we had a couple of property owners to the south that tuned in online through Zoom. Uh, we do know their concerns, although their alley loaded in the rear, they're concerned about adequate screening and buffering along that southern property line, so they're not seeing headlights, grid noise and so forth. So, uh, after the community meeting, what happens is we take all the comments, um, that we've received from the public and we start sending it through staff evaluation with all of the departments and work with the developer to find to the plant insurance and compliance. We're addressing the neighborhood, uh, the neighbors' concerns. Then it will get prepared to be presented here to the planning board for a recommendation to the town council. So it's a couple of months out, but it will be coming up pretty soon. Calway, now Calway was actually started back in twenty seventeen. I started looking back at this, uh, neighborhood. So this was approved as a conditional zoning and pressure organization as well. It's an age restricted community. It was approved for eighty-one single-family lots. I believe it was originally approved with the development team, they have been Essex. Uh, now it is Stanley Martin. Um, I'm showing you this plan just because it is coming close to being released for construction. So you'll start seeing this come out of the ground. So again, you can imagine it started back in twenty seventeen, um, based on engineering. And it happens quite often. Uh, they've lost some lots, I believe they're down to sixty-eight lots out of the group eighty-one. But again, it's still an age restricted community. And, uh, will be developed by Stanley Martin. So I'd say they're about a month or two away from being released for grading.
I'm sorry, you said this was Robinson Church, um, can you go back a little bit?
Next, the Kensington.
So Rossby River.
And it's pretty, I think it's already done, right? I think you remember this.
So another one that is going through the process, now this one was started a little later. It is Isley Meadows. It was a conditional zoning approved in twenty twenty-two. It was approved for seventy-one, uh, single-family lots, overall density of one point three three acres to the acre. Let's see if I can see and it show a little better where it's located. I can't read the maths from here, I, I apologize.
Peach Orchard and Buck and Robinson.
Yes, so this is actually a very beautiful property. I walked it last.
Isn't that, you should know like where they are coming out, if that's dangerous curve on, uh.
They didn't have to do it to manage. They're all extending one lot.
The big curve was off of Peach Orchard, that's completely different.
Yeah, that's a different one than this one.
I mean, Peach, Peach Orchard comes out Robinson Church, so that's not.
Yeah. The big, the big one that everybody was up and arms about is just off the page down slightly. Peach Orchard makes that sharp left.
This one is.
It's, uh, it's not a, it's a McKinley one that has a real sharp curve and near Pioneer Mill. Yes, I was on that road.
So where is this exiting on Peach Orchard?
So it's exiting.
Oh, that intersection, it's farther, yeah.
It's further away from the intersection, it's in the center of, and I'm sorry. Yeah, and then it will connect to Hopper, yes.
Awesome, yeah, that's amazing.
So this one, we're just fine tuning their plans. Um, they're on their force middle for construction plans. Uh, D R B Homes is the developer on this particular, uh, property. We're working really closely with them to ensure that, uh, we're trying to save all the perimeter trees um, and enhance the landscaping that's there. So we've been out on the sidewalking it, making sure we're getting the screening that, uh, was envisioned when it was first approved. So, uh, again, Isley Meadows and Calway to expect to, uh, it's at the end of its plan review, which is breaking ground.
Does that have another connector? Or collector rather?
No, uh.
Yeah, so that's.
Oh, yeah, Isley Meadows, this is the one, yes. You can see the main nectar through, it has a landscape in the main road. Now those homes are a little different. They were designed where, um, the back of the homes actually face that collector road and we are working with them on the landscaping of that. So when you're driving down the road, you're not just looking at the backup homes. It's going to be well landscaped. So, uh, this one's taken a little more time in working out those details. So that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions about any other developments that are going on out there. Think that's all I have?
Do you, or members have any comments? I get a motion for adjournment? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?